Want to open the meeting? I'd like to open the planning commission meeting for January 16th, 2014. Welcome, everybody. Okay, first item, roll call.
Roll call. Mr. Gold.
Here.
Mr. Berger.
Here.
Mr. DeWing.
Here.
Mr. Peters.
Here.
Mr. Ewan.
Here.
Mr. Camarota.
Mr. Spiege, your turn to vote.
Here.
Your turn.
Yeah.
All right, next item is public comments. Anybody want to speak? You can speak on the item now, or you can speak during an item or any other general. Anybody else speak now? John? Okay. To that, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Okay, we've got a first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, approve. Approval of the minutes of the meeting. It's a December 5th meeting.
Move to approve as submitted.
Second.
First and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, passes.
I am so sorry, sir.
And an extension here, too.
Okay, so we have two extensions. All right, next one's announcements, committing a report.
We have that.
Okay, informal items.
None of those.
None of those. Okay, now we're going to go to the public hearings. Our first one is CA 114. Jim, would you like to speak?
I'm running with senior finality. I see a 114. This is a amendment that's been handed out in the state of Dallas. Last year, 2015, was a fall time ago. That was the best thing in the line. But last year, it was invited, always invited to study. It was a lot of time to do this kind of project. Two men, they're willing to start a celebration, you know, to provide efficiency and don't be standing for school. So for the construction of new school in Washington County, right now, what if they say, hey, we do all good.
What can we add, say, maybe I can find a state law if the Washington County students come into construct a building, maybe we have to apply it. Because they have to allow us to do this. And the other people, they should be here. So I potentially set for anyone to.
I think that's right. I mean, I, you know, I question whether or not the state can make anyone pass an ordinance, but it doesn't really matter. If they pass one and they intend to occupy the entirety of the field, that's the law. They'd win under the supremacy clause.
Yes.
The only, I think, Jim, did I already stack for the, for the purpose of purposes, the standards were allowed to be physical, the standard is spot of all uses.
So as far as we're concerned, there are no problem. That's what it seemed like. Did you have something?
No.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
Okay, so since we want to keep Doug and Jim out of the court, I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council of the code amendment associated with CA-1-14.
Second.
First and second. Anybody more comments? Hearing none. Let's call for the vote. All those in favor.
He did.
Did he? Oh, he did. Opened and closed, sir. Thank you. Okay, let's have a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those pose.
Passes.
Thank you. Okay, next item, PCN 13025. Jim, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
However, without a special use permit, today's code would require a special use permit, so therefore the use is deemed nonconforming. Anytime a nonconforming use ceases for a period of six months, the use is deemed abandoned. The childcare facility use has ceased for a period that exceeds six months, and so in order to reestablish the use at this location, a special use permit is required. On the overhead is the location. It's located on the corner of 19th and Prater. One of the things that staff noted in its analysis is the play area located to the west of the building. That play area is partially located in the city's right-of-way. This, for obvious reasons, creates a little bit of a liability. Either the applicant apply for an abandonment subsequent to, or in anticipation of city council approval. However, if that approval is not granted for some reason, that that fence be relocated out of our right-of-way. This situation should not hamper the business in the near term. I'm not sure exactly what the outdoor play area requirements are through social services. However, there is additional play area located to the north of the building, and the property actually goes back towards E Street. The other concern that staff identified was parking. Parking in this instance is one space per employee plus one for every eight children. They have approximately 15 parking spaces available to them. The number of children depends largely on the ages of the children, and that also will dictate how many care providers are necessary. And so we have not placed a limit on the number of children in this particular case. The belief is they could get anywhere between 80 to 100 and meet those parking requirements provided they also meet the social services requirements for the number of caregivers. And then lastly, was the landscaping. This particular project poses a little bit of a challenge for us because there's not much in the way of landscaping, particularly on the frontage. Some of you may be aware that over the past several years, the city has used its CDBG grant funds to, on the Prater Victorian Streetscape project. So there are, we've had to do that in phases because of how the funding is allocated. And so the thought is that perhaps we can have the applicant, or work with the applicant, on installing those improvements in front of this particular property. And so we've left that condition broad for that reason, so that it gives staff and the applicant the ability to work together on an acceptable solution to meeting the landscaping requirements in the code. Staff has been able to make all the findings, and we are recommending that you approve this item tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Jim, any questions at this point?
Yeah, I have one for Tim. Tim, is there a school zone light there?
Yes, there are school zone flashers.
Yeah, but are they in use?
No. I haven't been down here and heard a lot about them.
Yes, they are active because of the elementary school that's located just to the northwest of the project.
Okay.
Kate Smith.
Yeah. Okay, the applicant, would you like to speak?
I think.
Yes.
If I have to sit up here, you're embarrassed, too.
Sorry. Yes.
Belinda Martinez, I'm the applicant. I've been doing this kind of business for 20 years, so I'm anxious to do my own. I found this property, and it's, my thing is perfect for what I want to do. I talked to social services, they said everything looks fine, just after you guys approve, if you guys approve, everything is ready to go. Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah.
Again, you're looking towards that 80 to 100 people?
Yes, that depends on when they come and inspect, and they measure the rooms and see the space for the ages.
Okay.
So, yes, 80 to 100.
Yeah, probably. That sounds good.
The abandonment, is that a contingency that matters, the fence goes?
The way the condition reads is that either the property owner, who, I will tell you, staff, we've met with the applicant and the property owner to discuss this very situation. The property owner is willing to pursue this and find a solution to it. What we believe is, will happen is that the property owner will submit for an abandonment request. And then should the city council approve that abandonment request, then that property, that area will now be included in this particular parcel, and the city has, will not have any liability, and they would be able to utilize that area. What we're suggesting, or the way the condition reads, is that area not be used until such time as either A, the property's been abandoned, or B, the fence has been moved out of the land.
Great, you're okay with this?
Yes.
All right. Let's open the public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this? Okay, hearing none, close the public hearing. All right, any other questions, comments?
One comment, Mr. Chair, is that social services, they actually send over a zoning verification form, and so staff will have the opportunity to take a look at what the applicant is proposing. So based on the areas available to them, social services will determine how many kids and how many caregivers, and then will be able to, based on that, assess whether or not that number, or the parking demand meets that number.
That's great.
I have one more question. Under the condition number three, the landscaping that you talked about, can I see? The first two words there, as opposed to...
To all the other conditions where it talks about the applicant and their responsibility, the words there are the developer. Is that the owner?
Yeah, I mean, if you, typically, in situations like, I don't know how to explain this. So the special use permit runs with the property. And so while the applicant, Ms. Martinez, is actually applying for it with the approval of the property owner, we have an owner's affidavit, so the owner knows what's taking place here tonight, the special use permit runs with the land. So if Ms. Martinez, for example, wanted to move her business somewhere else, she wouldn't take that special use permit with her, it would actually stay with the property. So probably more of my fault for not recognizing that. But if you look on page three of the staff report, the property owner is listed here, and then the developer is listed as the property owner, and then Ms. Martinez listed as the applicant. In many cases, it's the same person. In this case, it's a little different.
But I guess my point is that the landscaping requirement is the requirement of the owner slash developer, whatever term we want to use, as opposed to the applicant. But it's required to make the special use permit active. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that conversation with the owners has been had as well.
Right.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All right, let's call for the question. Okay.
Is there anyone?
Yes, I am.
Remove the special use permit associated with PCN 13025 to allow for a childcare facility adopting findings S1 through S6 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report. Subject to conditions 1 through 8 as listed in the staff report.
Second. Okay, first and second. Any more questions? All right, let's do the call. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, passes.
Good luck with your project.
Good luck with your project. Thank you. All right, moving right along. PCN 13024. This is another one of yours?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. It's opposite of the plan for the record. This is a special use permit request for, again, similar to the last item, to essentially reestablish a nonconforming use. This particular fuel station, this gas station is located on the corner of 22nd and Prater. This gas station has been in existence since possibly 1960. The air photos that we have clearly show it in 1966, but not in 1958, and some documentation stated about 1960. So it's been around for a while. Similar to the last item, the use today would be permitted with the approval of the special use permit, under the assumption that this was legally and lawfully established back in the 1960s. The use has ceased for a period that exceeds six months, and therefore the nonconforming use is deemed abandoned. In this case, to reestablish the use would require the special use permit. The zoning in this case is TOD, transit-oriented development. However, this project does not meet the standards, or does not meet the applicability requirements in the TOD manuals, so we're simply reverting back to the city's code, particularly the parking and landscape ordinances of Title 20. The existing convenience store is about 1,500 square foot. The applicant is proposing to reestablish the convenience store use as well as the fueling islands. This property, again, had no landscaping, so staff worked with the applicant on providing as much landscaping as was feasible, while at the same time meeting the parking requirements. The convenience store alone would require six parking spaces. As you can see from the site plan, there are six parking spaces, and we've added about 12% landscaping. The code would require 15% landscaping. However, there is a clause in Chapter 20.32 that states, "Any area that is located within a special area of interest within the city, such as a redevelopment area, that the administrator may consider additional landscaping requirements that are either less than or greater than what the code would require." And in this particular case, it is in a redevelopment district. This is an area of special interest. We strongly want to encourage additional businesses in this particular area, and hopefully with the reestablishment of this, it'll help kickstart that. Unlike the previous item, this particular property did not have the ability to put the landscaping along the frontage, because there's a continuous curb cut, so there's access to the fuel pumps themselves. So the landscaping is located on the corner there, and then along 22nd Street near the, those parking spaces, and it totals, again, about 12%. Staff, again, has been able to make all the applicable findings, and we recommend that you approve this item tonight.
Thank you, Tim. Questions for this staff?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple. Tim, what is this in our packet, the business entity detail? Let me, is that...
That is, that's from the California Secretary of State. It's just to alert you who the officers are, who the corporation is that's applying to the property owner.
Okay, 'cause I've never seen one.
Yeah, typically when we include those in your packets, it's from the Nevada Secretary of State. In this particular case, it's California.
Okay. And then in the staff report, it says, "In 2002, the site plan review was approved for environmental remediation." Do you know what that was?
I do. I was the planner on that back in 2002.
Very good.
Yeah, around that time, there were, we had a lot of environmental remediation projects. So essentially, though, likely there was a leak in the tanks, and so there was some contaminated soil, and so an environmental remediation system was set up whereby it would essentially filter the dirt and clean it. I don't believe that the equipment is still on site, so...
Was there any contamination in the soil that you know of?
I'm sure there was in 2002, which is the purpose, which would have been the purpose behind the remediation at that point in time. But again, I don't think the equipment exists today, so I would suggest that it's been cleaned up.
Okay. No more questions. The applicant, would the applicant like to speak? Mr. Kropotic?
You want the...
Take anything you got.
Whatever you need, John.
Good evening, Commissioners, John Kropotic. I'm here representing the owner and applicant. You know, I have no presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. Staff has been very straightforward, nice to work with. I think we got a very simple list of conditions, and hopefully add a little bit of gingerbread to the site with the landscaping and the refacing of the building. So I think it's a positive from that aspect. So that's all I have, and like I said, I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions at this point? Thank you, John. All right, well, at this point, let's open the public hearing. Anybody like to speak? You can leave. You can, you can, you cannot. Okay, no public, let's put this public hearing. Any more comments, questions, guys? Hearing none. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the special use permit associated with PCN 13024 to allow for the operation of an automotive service station and convenience store adopting findings S1 through S6 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report. Subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 6 as listed in the staff report.
Second. Got a first and a second. Any other comments? All right, let's do the, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, passes.
Passes.
Thank you. All right, next one's announcements, committing a report.
We have that.
Okay, informal items. None of those. Okay, now we're going to go to the public hearings. Our first one is CA 114. Jim, would you like to speak?
I'm running with senior finality. I see a 114. This is a amendment that's been handed out in the state of Dallas. Last year, 2015, was a fall time ago. That was the best thing in the line. But last year, it was invited, always invited to study. It was a lot of time to do this kind of project. Two men, they're willing to start a celebration, you know, to provide efficiency and don't be standing for school. So for the construction of new school in Washington County, right now, what if they say, hey, we do all good? What can we add, say, maybe I can find a state law if the Washington County students come into construct a building, maybe we have to apply it. Because they have to allow us to do this. And the other people, they should be here.
I potentially set for anyone to.
I think that's right. I mean, I, you know, I question whether or not the state can make anyone pass an ordinance, but it doesn't really matter. If they pass one and they intend to occupy the entirety of the field, that's the law. They'd win under the supremacy clause.
Yes.
The only, I think, Jim, did I already stack for the, for the purpose of purposes, the standards were allowed to be physical, the standard is spot of all uses.
So as far as we're concerned, there are no problem. That's what it seemed like. Did you have something?
No.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
Okay, so since we want to keep Doug and Jim out of the court, I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council of the code amendment associated with CA-1-14.
Second.
First and second. Anybody more comments? Hearing none. Let's call for the vote. All those in favor.
He did.
Did he? Oh, he did. Opened and closed, sir. Thank you. Okay, let's have a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those pose.
Passes.
Thank you. Okay, next item, PCN 13025. Jim, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
However, without a special use permit, today's code would require a special use permit, so therefore the use is deemed nonconforming. Anytime a nonconforming use ceases for a period of six months, the use is deemed abandoned. The childcare facility use has ceased for a period that exceeds six months, and so in order to reestablish the use at this location, a special use permit is required. On the overhead is the location. It's located on the corner of 19th and Prater. One of the things that staff noted in its analysis is the play area located to the west of the building. That play area is partially located in the city's right-of-way. This, for obvious reasons, creates a little bit of a liability. Either the applicant apply for an abandonment subsequent to, or in anticipation of city council approval. However, if that approval is not granted for some reason, that that fence be relocated out of our right-of-way. This situation should not hamper the business in the near term. I'm not sure exactly what the outdoor play area requirements are through social services. However, there is additional play area located to the north of the building, and the property actually goes back towards E Street. The other concern that staff identified was parking. Parking in this instance is one space per employee plus one for every eight children. They have approximately 15 parking spaces available to them. The number of children depends largely on the ages of the children, and that also will dictate how many care providers are necessary. And so we have not placed a limit on the number of children in this particular case. The belief is they could get anywhere between 80 to 100 and meet those parking requirements provided they also meet the social services requirements for the number of caregivers. And then lastly, was the landscaping. This particular project poses a little bit of a challenge for us because there's not much in the way of landscaping, particularly on the frontage. Some of you may be aware that over the past several years, the city has used its CDBG grant funds to, on the Prater Victorian Streetscape project. So there are, we've had to do that in phases because of how the funding is allocated. And so the thought is that perhaps we can have the applicant, or work with the applicant, on installing those improvements in front of this particular property. And so we've left that condition broad for that reason, so that it gives staff and the applicant the ability to work together on an acceptable solution to meeting the landscaping requirements in the code. Staff has been able to make all the findings, and we are recommending that you approve this item tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Jim, any questions at this point?
Yeah, I have one for Tim. Tim, is there a school zone light there?
Yes, there are school zone flashers.
Yeah, but are they in use?
No. I haven't been down here and heard a lot about them.
Yes, they are, they are active because of the elementary school that's located just to the northwest of the project.
Okay.
Kate Smith.
Yeah. Okay, the applicant, would you like to speak?
I think... Belinda Martinez, I'm the applicant. I've been doing this kind of business for 20 years, so I'm anxious to do my own. I found this property, and it's, my thing is perfect for what I want to do. I talked to social services, they said everything looks fine, just after you guys approve, if you guys approve, everything is ready to go. Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah.
Again, you're looking towards that 80 to 100 people?
Yes, that depends on when they come and inspect, and they measure the rooms and see the space for the ages.
Okay.
So, yes, 80 to 100.
Yeah, probably. That's, thank you.
The abandonment, is that a contingency that matters, the fence goes?
The way the condition reads is that either the property owner, who, I will tell you, staff, we've met with the applicant and the property owner to discuss this very situation. The property owner is willing to pursue this and find a solution to it. What we believe is, will happen is that the property owner will submit for an abandonment request. And then should the city council approve that abandonment request, then that property, that area will now be included in this particular parcel, and the city has, will not have any liability, and they would be able to utilize that area. What we're suggesting, or the way the condition reads, is that area not be used until such time as either A, the property's been abandoned, or B, the fence has been moved out of the land.
Great, you're okay with this?
Yes.
All right. Let's open the public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this? Okay, hearing none, close the public hearing. All right, any other questions, comments?
One comment, Mr. Chair, is that social services, they actually send over a zoning verification form, and so staff will have the opportunity to take a look at what the applicant is proposing. So based on the areas available to them, social services will determine how many kids and how many caregivers, and then will be able to, based on that, assess whether or not that number, or the parking demand meets that number.
That's great.
I have one more question. Under the condition number three, the landscaping that you talked about, can I see? The first two words there, as opposed to...
To all the other conditions where it talks about the applicant and their responsibility, the words there are the developer. Is that the owner?
Yeah, I mean, if you, typically, in situations like, I don't know how to explain this. So the special use permit runs with the property. And so while the applicant, Ms. Martinez, is actually applying for it with the approval of the property owner, we have an owner's affidavit, so the owner knows what's taking place here tonight, the special use permit runs with the land. So if Ms. Martinez, for example, wanted to move her business somewhere else, she wouldn't take that special use permit with her, it would actually stay with the property. So probably more of my fault for not recognizing that. But if you look on page three of the staff report, the property owner is listed here, and then the developer is listed as the property owner, and then Ms. Martinez listed as the applicant. In many cases, it's the same person. In this case, it's a little different.
But I guess my point is that the landscaping requirement is the requirement of the owner slash developer, whatever term we want to use, as opposed to the applicant. But it's required to make the special use permit active. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that conversation with the owners has been had as well.
Right.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All right, all right, let's call for the question. Okay.
Is there anyone?
Yes, I am.
Remove the special use permit associated with PCN 13025 to allow for a childcare facility adopting findings S1 through S6 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report. Subject to conditions 1 through 8 as listed in the staff report.
Second. Okay, first and second. Any more questions? All right, let's do the call. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, passes.
Good luck with your project.
Good luck with your project. Thank you. All right, moving right along. PCN 13024. This is another one of yours?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. It's opposite of the plan for the record. This is a special use permit request for, again, similar to the last item, to essentially reestablish a nonconforming use. This particular fuel station, this gas station is located on the corner of 22nd and Prater. This gas station has been in existence since possibly 1960. The air photos that we have clearly show it in 1966, but not in 1958, and some documentation stated about 1960. So it's been around for a while.
...or does not meet the applicability requirements in the TOD manuals. So, we're simply reverting back to the city's code, particularly the parking and landscape ordinances of Title 20. The existing convenience store is about 1,500 square foot. The applicant is proposing to reestablish the convenience store use as well as the fueling This property, again, had no landscaping. So, staff worked with the applicant on providing as much landscaping as was feasible while at the same time meeting the parking requirements. The convenience store alone would require six parking spaces. As you can see from the site plan, there are six parking spaces, and we've added about 12 percent landscaping. The code would require 15 percent landscaping, however, there is a clause in Chapter 20.32 that states, "Any area that is located within a special area of interest within the city, such as a redevelopment area, that the administrator may consider additional landscaping requirements that are either less than or greater than what the code would require." And in this particular case, it is in a redevelopment district. This is an area of special interest. We strongly want to encourage additional businesses in this particular area, and hopefully with the reestablishment of this, it'll help kickstart that. Unlike the previous item, this particular property did not have the ability to put the landscaping along the frontage because there's a continuous curb cut, so there's access to the fuel pumps themselves. So, the landscaping is located on the corner there, and then along 22nd Street near the those parking spaces, and it totals, again, about 12 percent. Staff, again, has been able to make all the applicable findings, and we recommend that you approve this item tonight.
Thank you. Tim, questions for this staff?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple. Tim, what is this in our packet, the business entity detail? Let me use that.
That is, that's from the California Secretary of State. It's just to alert you who the officers are, who the corporation is that's applying the property owner. Yeah, typically when we include those in your packets, it's from the Nevada Secretary of State. In this particular case, it's California.
Okay. And then, in the staff report, it says, "In 2002, the site plan review was approved for environmental remediation." Do you know what that was?
I do. I was the planner on that back in 2002. Yeah, around that time, there were, we had a lot of environmental remediation projects. So, essentially, though, likely there was a leak in the tanks, and so there was some contaminated soil, and so an environmental remediation system was set up whereby it would essentially filter the dirt and clean it. I don't believe that the, that the equipment is still on site, so...
Was there any contamination in the soil that you know of?
I'm sure there was in 2002, which is the purpose, which was, would have been the purpose behind the remediation at that point in time. But, again, I don't think the equipment exists today, so I would suggest that it's been cleaned up.
Okay. No more questions. The applicant, would the applicant like to speak? Mr. Kropotic?
You want the, take anything you got.
Whatever you need, John.
Good evening, Commissioners, John Kropotic. I'm here representing the owner and applicant. You know, I have no presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. Staff has been very straightforward, nice to work with. I think we got a very simple list of conditions, and hopefully add a little bit of gingerbread to the site with the landscaping and the refacing of the building. So, I think it's a positive from that aspect. So, that's all I have, and like I said, I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions at this point? Thank you, John. All right, well, at this point, let's open the public hearing. Anybody like to speak? You can leave. You can, you can, you cannot. Okay, no public, let's put this as a public hearing. Any more comments, questions, guys? Hearing none. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion. I move to approve the special use permit associated with PCN 13024 to allow for the operation of an automotive service station and convenience store adopting findings S1 through S6 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 6 as listed in the staff report.
Second. Got a first and a second. Any other comments? All right, let's do, always in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes. Thank you. All right, next item is PCN 13026. Karen, come and have a seat. Be careful.
Lord, not me. Good evening, Chairman and Planning Commissioner, Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you tonight is a request for a major deviation to reduce the front setback by three feet. The required front setback is 15, and they're requesting to go to 12, which is a 20 percent reduction to allow them to add an addition to their house. This, this property is located in the subdivision Vintage Hills. It's this gray parcel here on Christina. They're located at 860 Christina. The applicant is reducing, requesting to reduce the setback of the front of their addition. Here is the site plan. You see, here's Christina, and they're proposing to add these two additions, and it's just this corner right here that projects into the front setback. It's not the entire additions, the side of the addition. This is an enlargement, help you. Part of the request, as you can see from my exhibit here, there's two lines. This area would actually qualify for a minor deviation, which is an administrative application, but because this here, which is 5.9 square feet, we're going to include the entire area as part of this major deviation, and it totals 18.75 square feet of the 1,300 square foot additions that they're adding. Staff finds that the major deviation is consistent with the R16 zoning district in that the coverage is less than 40 percent of the site. The property has adequate parking, because they do have a long driveway, to accommodate the three additional bedrooms. The addition will not impair the function of the street. The shape of the lot makes it difficult to fit a rectangular home on this property, and with the additions designed to match the existing house architecture, the additions would be compatible with the neighborhood. Therefore, based on the findings, staff is recommending approval with six conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions at this point? Okay, applicant, like to speak? Can you give us your name and who you represent? Welcome.
Whoa.
Yep. Everybody's going to get hurt here.
I know.
We don't get any points subtracted for posture here.
I know. Isn't that terrible?
My name's Dan Karn, I'm a local architect, and I represent the Tubain's Brothers up there. They have lived in that house with their families since 1994. Everything is, is as Karen has stated, and we're comfortable with all the conditions and pretty straightforward. So, happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
Okay. Any questions at this point? Looks like no questions here. All right, well, thank you. Let me open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. All right, any other questions?
I have just one question in our study session. You indicated that there, the possibility that there might be some response from neighborhood organizations. Did we hear anything at all?
I did not receive any phone calls today from the HOA for Vintage Hills.
Thank you.
Yes, so they didn't get back with you?
No, they did not.
And so they're, right, that you have talked to before.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, well, anybody would like to make a motion on this?
I'll move ahead. I move to approve the major deviation associated with PCN 13026, adopting findings MD1 through MD5, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 6 as listed in the staff report.
Second. Got a first and a second. Any more comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, no? Good luck with your addition.
Thank you very much.
All right, now, we're getting on to general business. Let me see, as you know, this is an item that we had tabled before, PCN 13014. Would anybody like to take it?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring back to the commission, PCN 13014, RRW Stonebrook.
All right. First and second, any comments? All right, let's have a vote on this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes. Let's go on now to the actual hearing. PCN 13014, Stonebrook. Karen, again.
Yes. Good evening, Karen Melby, Senior Planner. This is a tentative map request for 617 residential lots located in Stonebrook Plan Development. This would be Phase 1 of the Stonebrook Plan Development, and this area represents Phase 1 of the Stonebrook area. Before you, before the Plan Commission in August 1st of 2013, this item was tabled due to concerns regarding fire sprinklers, parks, trails, and open space. After working with the Fire Chief and the Fire Marshal, Condition 20 has been removed since there is no, there is a mutual aid agreement between the City of Sparks and Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, and also the developer had installed the paging and radio system that was required by Condition 20 in the previous tentative map. They would be served by Truckee Meadows Fire Station 17. This map represents the four villages that are in Phase 1. Working with the applicant, applicant on some of the rewording for the, the project, staff has reworded Condition 21 to include two options. The first option is the developer pay the regional trail impact fee at the time of each individual residential permit is issued, or, and dedicate the right-of-way to the city. Or, the option two is that the developer enters into an impact fee credit agreement with the city for the developer to construct regional trails adjacent to the village and completed by the 30th residential building permit. On this map, it's a little hard to see the colors, but this piece here represents the regional trail, just for your information, and each color represents the phases. The next condition that was reworded is Condition 22. This condition adds that the path within Phase 1 shall be constructed prior to the issuance of the house building permits for Village A at the 30th house permit, 40th house permit for Village 2B, and also the 40th house permit at Village 2, B2, B1. The next condition, and that is, so that would be, the orange here represents the segment of the trail by the B villages, and this is a segment of the trail, and the pink here, if you can tell the colors, by Village A. Condition 23 is the next one that we reworded, the wording, and this pertains to the park site, and has been revised to have two options. The first option is that the developer shall pay residential construction tax at the, at the time of each individual residential permit and also dedicate the land for the park. The other option is the developer would enter into a residential construction tax agreement with the city and the plans for the parks, and submit plans for the park to the city with the final map. The park would have to be constructed and be completed by the 300th residential building permit. Condition 24 regard, is pertaining to the open space improvements within Phase 1, and they shall be completed in conjunction with the development prior to the issuance of the final of the house permit for the 41st house in Village A, 54th in Village B1, 54th in Village B2, 222nd in Village C, 185th in Village D. At the study session on Tuesday, there was some discussion on adding a Condition 25 that would require notification of the homeowners of the timing of these improvements. After discussion with the city attorney's office, staff was told not to include the condition for legal reasons. There are also, there was also comments on the secondary access as shown on the, this Shows a secondary map, access coming down, connecting to Pioneer Meadows. That is actually covered by Condition 15, so I didn't add a condition to cover that. And that would be approved by the Fire Marshal prior to the recordation of the final map. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions at this point?
A little more conversation on, and I'll just pick out item 24, Karen, to make sure we all understand what you're doing there, Condition 24. The, it's talking about improving the, having the open space improvements completed by these various measures. Is that the, is the completion of the open space required when the developer hits any one of those, the 41st in A, the 54th in B1, or so forth, or completes all of those?
No, it would be by village. So, when in Village A is what, 41st? When they get to the 41st home in Village 1, they have to have the open space.
Associated with Village 1.
I mean Village A, yes. Uh-huh.
And so forth with each of those?
Yes, it's by each one.
So, it's by, it's, there's an open space dedicated in each of those villages, and each village would have its own time schedule based on meeting these criteria?
That's correct.
Okay.
Karen, to follow up with Doug, who's to say that on the, on the first one, Development A, if they stopped construction on the homes on the 40th house, then they went to Village B and started Village B? So, that, they wouldn't have to do any open space improvements because they stopped at the 40th?
Well, not until the, yeah, I'm talking, not until the 41st permit would be issued, then they wouldn't have to do that.
So, they could stop at the 40th and then go to Village B and go up to 221?
But then, they would never complete their subdivision, and I don't think that's likely.
Okay, I was just curious.
You can, you know, the applicant is here, they can answer that.
So, again, these are individuals and there's numbers?
They're by village.
There's nothing cumulative?
No, the only one that's cumulative is by the park.
It's the bars?
And, and the regional trail.
Your asset.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions? I'm going to call up the applicant. Let's call up the applicant at this point. Don't fall.
Thank you very much. For the record, Andy Durling with Wood Rogers, representing the applicant owner. Just want to start off first, we appreciate the opportunity that you afforded us back in August to go back and work with staff. I will be very complimentary of staff. They were very open. We met with them several times, and the whole process was very productive. We are in agreement with staff's recommendations and the augmented conditions as they're presented to you tonight. I would be happy to answer any questions, but just to address Commissioner Lean's comments, obviously, the goal is to build out the subdivision, and we, if you could put up the colored one?
This one?
Yeah. So, the idea behind this exhibit really was to show not just the phasing of the trails, but also the open space. So, you know, for example, the pink area there with subdivision A or Village A there, the intent there is that all of that open space is included in what you see in the pink. So, it's the frontage on La Posada and everything down to the northern edge of Village C, I think it is, in the yellow. So, that pathway and the open space is all included there and would be constructed by, I believe it's the 41st lot. So, we felt that it was a good metric to associate those improvements with, you know, the staged development of that individual village.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
With that, I'd be happy.
Yeah. Cool. Yeah. I understand what Karen talked about with our conversation about Condition 25, but I'd like to kind of follow up and get some information from you. There is no Condition 25 as, we had, we had discussed that on Tuesday, the possibility of putting one in, and the reason is that...
Let me explain to him what that would have been, is a notification to the homeowners of the staging of when the improvements would be put in, is what they were talking about for a potential Condition 25.
My concern is that we've gone through over the last six or eight years, you know, a number of situations where developers came in with the best of intentions, I'm sure, and projects just never got done. And so, the first person who bought a lot based on a very pretty brochure showing a park and a trail and a whatever the amenities might be, those never came to fruition for perhaps no one's fault, but it just didn't happen. And, you know, we're entering into a situation here where this is a large development and potentially even under the best of circumstances is going to take years, and under the worst of circumstances, might never get to these completion levels that we're talking about. And so, my question is, what sort of notification does the first buyer in one of these villages get to let them know that, that the amenities that they are expecting are when they might, when they would come in terms of the 30th or the 54th or whatever it is, and so that they can make a reasonable judgment about whether how likely that is to be two years away, or five years away, or never away?
Right.
Because that's caused lots of problems for folks in this community over the, over the last six or eight years, and it's no one's fault, but it's, it's reality. So, I'd like to, I'd like to hear from you, anyway, what the procedure is to notify potential buyers of exactly what the parameters are for these, these various amenities that will be promised at some point.
Sure.
Ted, would you want to, yeah?
Good luck with the chair.
Don't fall down.
We're just looking, sitting sideways.
Kind of special.
So, first of all, Ted Ericson, here is a friend and helper to RRW, not in any capacity with Lewis Operating Corp., I guess, to get that on the record.
Okay.
So, what happens, because it's a community interest, a common interest association, it'll be a, you know, it'll be an LMA, you know, could be HOA, but when you do those, when you do one of those, you have to have a public disclosure document in order to get your real estate license through, through the real estate division at the state. So, quite frankly, that gets taken care of through that process. Now, whether people read those things, you know, when, and I'm not, I bought a new house once, once in my life, and you get the, in a master plan community, too, and you get a huge stack of stuff. And whether you choose to read that or not is kind of up to you. But, but to, I guess, most properly answer your question, because it's a common interest community, you have to make, you have to have a community disclosure document. That's just a law. And so, you know, the entitlements are part, get included as part of that relative, and I'm, and I'm speaking to the, the open space elements that would be owned, you know, the common areas and common elements that would be owned by that, by that association, whether it's a HOA or an LMA. The regional trails and the parks are a totally different matter, and, and I think that's why staff likely, you know, their legal counsel told them not to add a condition on that just because the cities, the city could be obligated to build a park depending on which option gets chosen. So, then that becomes your burden to notify those folks. So, I hope that answers your question.
Yes. So, the, well, perhaps that opened up the second question, and I, for Karen or the applicant or whoever else, the options that are, of what happens to the money and, and who has the obligation to build? That's your choice?
Well, no. Well, it's, we're, RRW would be a, go ahead, John, would be a, you know, a partner in that discussion. Under the residential construction tax, which is contained in NRS, you know, everybody pays 1% of valuation up to $1,000 to the city at time of building permit, and the cities, it's the city's obligation to build parks. Under the regional, under IFSA 1 for regional trails, the developer at time of building permit pays a impact fee for regional trail and park improvement, and it's the city's obligation to use those funds and build things like Golden Eagle Park and regional trails. So, the money derives from fees collected at building permit and the city's obligation. So, what happens, and I've done these agreements numerous times in IFSA 1, when we do an RCT agreement, what generally, the way those are generally crafted, and John can agree with me or disagree, typically, the developer still pays, the home builder still pays the fee to the city. We used to do these a different way, but it didn't work out so well. So, we do them a different way. Developer still pays the, the $1,000 RCT at building permit. City collects the money. The developer says, "I'll build the park. I'll build the park at this threshold." These are the things that get discussed at these RCT, what we call RCT agreements. And the developer comes to the city with a plan, says, "Here's the plan for the park." The city Parks and Rec Department, Planning Department will pine or comment. It's kind of a collaborative effort. Developer goes and builds the park. Developer then says, "Now, city, it's time to reimburse me for the park with the funds that you collected under the RCT." So, it, as a practical matter, it makes a lot of sense to try to balance those things out. It's probably not logical to build the park with the last building permit, but it's certainly not logical to build the park with first building permit, because if it's the first building permit, you only have $1,000, but if you go build a $300,000 park, you're upside down $299,000. So, we try to, try to balance those out with some of these thresholds. So, again, to answer your question, I can't tell you what RRW will do, but they have an option. They can just pay the fee, dedicate the land, meaning give the land to the city, and have the city build the park, or they can enter into an, into an RCT. Relative to the regional trails, they can do something similar, which is they enter into an IFSA credit, or credit agreement, and they still pay the fee and they go build the trail, and then the city reimburses them. So, the money derives from the same places. And so, what we try to do in discussing these things with staff at this level and at the future negotiations is, hey, what should those thresholds be? Because the city's also very interested in not, in not only having $1,000, but having to write a $300,000 check, and those are the things that we kind of consider in those types of meetings. We, we work with staff to craft these conditions this way because RRW will be a master developer, they believe at this point, and they will sell villages to different home builders, but they still aren't ready to commit to say, "Okay, we'll, we'll negotiate that RCT agreement quite yet."
Done.
Yeah. Let me start by saying, just for everybody up here, that was a solid explanation of how that works.
I was going to say, you think, very good.
That was a really, really good explanation of how that works.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to still it a little bit more for you to kind of drive the point home. On the regional trails and the parks, in state law, the city is responsible for their construction. The developer provides the funds through the residential construction tax and the, and the impact fees. All right? The reason we enter into the agreements is that if the developer builds the park and we reimburse them, you will get more park. When you set thresholds at 300, you'll have $300,000 in your, in your park fund. That probably isn't enough for the city to build the park at that threshold.
Right.
All right? So, that's why you set those things, and that's why we don't want you to include the condition that says you're going to notify all these people, "Hey, this is going to be built with the 300th permit," because if they decide down the road, "Hey, city, listen, we're just going to pay the tax, you know, we're, we're good corporate citizens, we're going to pay the tax, but you're going to build the park," we may not have the money to build the park at the 300th permit. So, that's why.
That's why.
But, again, that was a, that was a solid explanation on how the impact fees and the residential construction tax works, and so I hope everybody was paying attention.
Well, my concern in the, in this is, is not whatever arrangements have been made, they're, they're made between the city and reasonable business folks that determine what makes sense, but that, that we, as much as possible, we try to find ways to let potential home buyers know what the rules are.
I certainly understand that, and, and just my concern from the city attorney's office is that if we put that in there and we, and we... office is if we put that in there and we, and we obligate the city to make sure it's constructed at the three-hundredth building permit, essentially the planning commission has obligated the city to spend money, and I'm not certain you have the authority to do that.
That's, that's in conjunction with the park site specifically.
Yes. Well, it would, I mean, the, the same logic would apply for the regional trails.
Can I make one other comment?
But not the open space improvements or anything else?
No.
I'm sorry, John.
Thanks, Art. John Martini, city engineer, one thing I'd like the planning commission to remember is that the tentative map conditions that you impose upon a project, when we go to process the first final map, we have to make sure that every tentative map condition has reasonably been met before we can bring forth a final map for city council approval. Condition twenty-five that you are talking about could cause quite a problem for staff to say the final map is in conformance with the tentative map, because how, how would we notify a homeowner when the map doesn't exist yet? So please bear that in mind, that tentative map conditions set a framework for all of us to work towards to get to a final map, which creates the lots, which allows a home to be built. So that, that was another reason we contemplated today. It would be a difficult map condition for us to, to meet.
In that same, in that same vein, you know, to the extent the city council or the planning commission really, really, really wanted to pursue that type of thing, like, like Mr. Martini said, this, this would not be the document to pursue it in. You'd want to pursue it in some sort of development agreement, you'd want to pursue it in the residential construction tax reimbursement agreement or the impact fee credit agreement. That's where you'd want to see that condition, if that is the road you wanted to head down, not as a condition on the tentative map.
Any more questions? Okay, well, couple more items, John. Might as well sit down here, my friend.
Sure, I can sit down.
As we discussed, yeah, just, just stay for a while. Obviously, that, the road to the south is project, and you know, as we were looking at that and we've talked a little bit, and you're talking conditions, so future roadway, secondary access, I guess it wasn't clear to me that that was being built to anything. Strictly, the condition you're talking about is strictly a condition for fire, there are other reasons besides fire. So could you maybe explain what's gonna happen? Talk about that condition.
When, should you agree to approve this tentative map? And it continues through the system and becomes a tentative map? When the first final map comes in, you saw the, the four potential villages, whichever one it may be, staff will sit down, will sit down with the fire marshal, police department gets involved as well.
Police.
We look at the civil improvement plans, the proposed final map, and that's when access, secondary access particularly, is requested. We work with the developer and their engineers to establish that secondary access. Quite often in the past, in the good old days, when we were building a thousand homes a year, we'd say pave it from point A to point B and bring your map in. Things have changed a lot. We're probably in an environment where we'll see, I'm guessing thirty unit subdivisions, maybe fifties, maybe twenty-fives, and they're much smaller. We used to get them in three-hundred and a shot, big areas of land. So imagine a, a small piece of this tentative map coming in at first, that section would be paved and fully improved, and we'll work with the fire marshal and the police department to establish a secondary road into the project. It would come from, I believe it's the edge of unit four of Pineapple Meadows would be the most likely, and it would, we'd build the road dead and put a base course on top of it, probably gate it for emergency access only. And the residents, those first thirty residents, sixty as this, you know, ninety as this builds to the south, as we get closer to that area, we'll come to a point where we will require the road to be fully improved because we'll need two forms of traffic. But in the beginning, to be, to be fair, those first thirty, sixty residents will be using La Posada as their primary access, and they'll have to wait in time until these roads develop and, and we open them up.
Okay, the second thing with that, that whole thing, I'm thinking, this is essentially an island. It is not accessible by sparks. You're gonna be taking police then in through the county and then back into sparks?
No, police and fire would be able-
Or not? Can you explain where the-
Police and fire would be able to access the secondary road from Pioneer Meadows to the south.
From the beginning?
Yes.
Okay. Could, is applicant got any comments on that?
Yeah, I would just add, yes, the, the emergency vehicles will be able to access that, that temporary roadway. And if I'm not mistaken, La Posada is a city of sparks right away.
It is.
So with Pyramid and La Posada, I mean, it is in the city of sparks.
So that is on the-
Yes. The, the proposed tentative map is fully within the city of sparks, while if you look at an aerial photo, it looks like an island off on its own.
It, it does to me, and I-
It is surrounded by city streets.
As you can see, access, if you can't bring the police in there, it's gonna take a lot longer going from the north on this thing, so.
Understood.
And so you're saying that condition satisfies this and-
Yes.
And you're okay with it? Sounds good on there. Any other questions? It's not a public, I guess then we can have a, anybody want to make motion on this thing?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the tentative map associated with PCN 13014, adopting findings T1 through T12 and the facts supporting these findings, as set forth in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval. One through twenty-four is listed in the staff report.
Anybody, you want the second? First and second, any more comments, anybody?
Just sort of a final comment on what, it's obviously a pet peeve of mine, and that, a request to the ultimate developer of these projects, that we do our very best on these projects that have trigger mechanisms for open space and, and pathway constructions to, to make certain that, that buyers have a document that's easy to read and, and they, they can be aware and make their own judgment about how likely it is to be X number of years before those actually come to fruition.
Okay, any more comments? All right, let's call for a vote. All in, some favors, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, passes. Good luck with your project.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you. Our next item is number fourteen, election of planning commission officers for 2014. Mondo, maybe explain what-
Well, we have a, one of your number, Commissioner Sanders, her reappointment to the planning commission is pending. City council action on the 27th of January. You know, I had made this suggestion to the chair that perhaps if Barbara is interested in, in a, in an officer position, if the commission is interested in having her serve in an opposite capacity, that you defer your, your election of officers to the next meeting and that way, you know, presumably Commissioner Sanders will be, will have been reappointed. But that's simply a suggestion on my part, and it's really up to the other commission to make a decision as to what you want to do in terms of the election of officers.
Okay, thank you.
Mondo, could we go ahead and elect the vice chair? And then, I don't know whether we would table, I don't think we would table this, but just-
I suppose theoretically you could. It's probably not something you do all the time.
Okay. So what, would we table this, or?
Would we?
Or continue not table, right?
Yeah. Continue to date certain. So your first, your February meeting.
Okay, well, to the next meeting.
Let's just say next meeting.
I'd like to continue the planning commission officers for 2014 until the, our next sparks planning commission meeting.
Second?
Could I?
Yes.
Proposed amendment.
Go ahead.
In addition to continuing the vote on the 2014 officers, Commissioner Lean, would you, would you mind adding that the, the 2013 officers will just continue in their capacities until such time as new officers are elected?
To add on to my motion, I would like to make sure that the chairman, Art Spurber, continues chair until our, the Sparks Planning Commission votes on a new chair and vice chair. Okay, the second, if you'd like.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay, we have first, second, any comments here? All right, a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, passes. Okay, so we're here for another meeting. Let me see, next item, public comments, any comments?
The rules and procedure.
Oh, the rules and procedure, I totally missed that. Okay, next item, rules and procedure, would somebody, staff want to discuss this item?
Well, they've been provided to you. I apologize, I was not present at the, at your study session, but, you know, I guess this is your opportunity to revisit the, the rules procedure. I guess I would ask the, the planning staff as to whether there were any, any changes that they were, you know, recommending to you specifically.
There was one item.
Yes.
Armando, I think Art brought it up.
Yes. What I, what I did was, when I looked through there, again, the timing of when we bring up, and I'm calling the applicant, and essentially in the thing under number H, it's, it's, it opened the public meeting and then called for the applicant. I'd like to move the applicant under after we call for the presentation before the public. And so it's one, one minor change in there.
Okay.
Do we need to fix that at this point, or can we vote on this with just that one change at this point?
Well, I mean, you can vote on just that one change, or we can continue the conversation and vote on all the changes at once?
Sure.
You know?
Is there other changes?
Mr. Chair, again, Tim Thompson, senior planner for the record, we did not, staff did not have any proposed changes to your rules of procedure.
I had one question, and actually it's for our legal counsel. In Article Four, Meetings, Section One, D, on page four of the Rules of Procedure, it reads, "In the event that there is no business to conduct, a notice shall be mailed to the commissioners and posted as required by law on the Friday prior to the regularly scheduled meeting, canceling that meeting." We do do the posting. I guess my counsel, my question to counsel is whether we could amend that to specify that the, the notice could be emailed to the, to the commissioners electronically?
A little more modern?
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. Yeah, I mean, we can, we can come up with some language to, to specify that it's not limited to United States Postal Service.
Electronic, I mean, all of a sudden, anything's gonna be electronic.
Okay, that's fine. Shall be notified in writing.
Right. Any other, I'm sorry, I didn't give you a full presentation on this thing.
All right. Well, I'd like to formally move that we, we move item three, under section three, item H, number three, A, we'll call on the applicant for presentation to move that above the open public hearing and become a new item three, which would then make open public hearings item four.
And then the other item.
Would you like me to read my specific language to?
To put about.
"In the event that there is no business to conduct, the commissioner shall be notified in writing and a cancellation notice posted as required by law on the Friday prior to the regularly scheduled meeting, canceling that meeting."
All right, so first, will you accept that as part of your motion?
I will. I will accept that as an amendment to the motion.
Right. And the second?
I'll second that.
That's wonderful. Thank you. First and second, any comments? No comments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that passes, I guess. Now we have the public comments. Anybody from the public? Nobody here? I'll close that item. Comments from commissioners?
Just want to say I appreciate Jim and Tim matching today, that was very nice.
Yeah, I didn't get the memo.
Do we have a second?
Armando's got a blue shirt on.
Oh, that's true.
I didn't get the memo.
That's great. Do we have a move?
No, no, we haven't. I'm still on-
A move during the meeting.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass. All of you, you see it.